Live from El Paso County, Texas, the Veterans Capital of the USA. From inside to the Alicia Chacon Commissioner's courtroom of the Enrique Moreno County Courthouse, you are watching the El Paso County Commissioners Court meeting.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Monday, November 17th, 2025. Commissioners Court is meeting in regular open session. This morning, we're joined by ASL interpreters Tamara Márquez, Selena Salum, and Katia García. Commissioner Alguín, would you like to introduce this morning's pledge group?
Yes, thank you. Good morning, everyone. So today, we are very blessed to have with us ambassadors from the Anna M. García Enriquez Middle School in San Elizario, and they will be leading us in the pledge today. Thank you for being here with us. Go ahead and come up to the mic. And if you want to just introduce yourselves, say your name real quick and maybe what grade
Good morning. My name is Andrea Carrera, and I'm an eighth grader student.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Nate Padilla, and I'm in eighth grade.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is José Cervantes, and I'm an eighth grader.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Joaquín Soto. I'm an eighth grader.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Alondra Muro, and I'm an eighth grader.
Good morning.
Thank you for being here with us today.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you very much. And I understand you're going to continue a tour, so we welcome you and wish you the best, and thank you, Commissioner Alguín.
Yes, they'll be starting their tour of the El Paso County Courthouse at about 10:00, so they're going to listen in to our wonderful resolution that we have today, and then they'll be receiving a tour from our incredible law library staff. So if anyone sees them in the hallway, any county employees, and wants to stop and chat with them and tell them a little bit about what you do here at the county, we would really appreciate that.
Great.
Thank you.
Next, we'll receive an invocation from Dr. Naomi Cortés, representing Join Us for Justice, the El Paso Chapter of Americans United for Separation of Church and State.
Good morning. Welcome.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners, and thank you for allowing me to deliver the opening message. Today, I'm here to share a message from my mother, Kathy Mocechan, who could not be here today. She wrote the following. As we are here to gather in the spirit of service to our community, I would like to take a moment to reflect on the season we are embarking upon. Thanksgiving is more than just a holiday. It's an opportunity to share in generosity, give gratitude, and a reminder of the simple power of kindness. In our world, a world that more often feels divided, kindness is that one single bridge that can connect us. Kindness doesn't judge. It doesn't see who has a have or have not. It doesn't require status or wealth, but only intention. Let words of encouragement, a smile to a complete stranger, a meal shared to someone in need be a ripple effect. Pay it forward as in many ways as you can, or that ripple effect we may never see. As members of the council, your hard work and decision shape the daily lives of our communities. Let us remember that policies made here can be opportunities to extend kindness as they ensure that everyone in the community feels valued and supported. This season, let's all commit ourselves to smiling more often to strangers, having more gratitude for what we have and showing kindness in what we give. Why? Because kindness can easily become a strong foundation in our actions, and the ripple effect will be a city that becomes more than a place to live, but more importantly, a place to belong. That's a purpose to strive for. Thank you.
Judge, do you have some opening remarks for us this morning?
Thank you. Just, it's always a pleasure. On behalf of myself and the Commissioners, we welcome you to Commissioners Court. Always very exciting to have young people and start off our Pledge of Allegiance with these young individuals, and I was telling them that San Elia is a seat of the county, and they should be very proud of their of their community. So we welcome all of you. We thank you for being here and wishing you just a very blessed day and a very beautiful week. So thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Coronado, you want to talk a little bit about your volunteers on Saturday, just to give them a shout out?
Yes, I do want to give a shout out to the people that showed up to our West Side cleanup. And we start, we met at eight o'clock in the morning over at Gallegos Park. Judge, thank you for for being there to help out. Mayor Rachel Quintana was there, our Public Works. I want to thank Ferny, Norma, Arturo Magallanes. This morning, I went by and all the trash had been already picked up, so great, great job. Thank you all. And of course, Desert 915, Rick Flores and his son were there. Rick has really made it a mission to, you know, clean up the entire county, whether it be tires, oil, whatever that gets dumped out in the desert, anything. He's really made quite an impact on helping us, and I think, you know, he said that we ought to all coordinate together and do some things together, all the Commissioners Court. So I thought that was a great idea he had for us. Sun City Pickers were there, UTEP volunteers. We had other volunteers that found the event on social media, so thank you all for keeping up with our events and showing up for our community. And then also, a big thank you to our coordinator, Monica Hasso, volunteer coordinator, and also to my staff, Stephen Jimena and Leila. Everything went really smooth, and we picked up quite a bit of trash out there. It was very challenging, though, because a lot of the trash was underneath these shrubs that had thorns on them, like it's like small mesquite shrubs, and so I had to go to the hardware store and buy some cultivators so we can pull out that trash, because doing it with your hands just wasn't working. So anyways, I want to thank everybody that showed up. We had 50 volunteers go out there and picking trash along Donovan, so it was a great event. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Commissioner. Great job. Thank you.
Item number four is the Consent Agenda, composed of items 4A through 4AG. We do have a correction to read into item 4AC. Item 4AC from the Purchasing Department should read, "Approve and authorize the purchase of city-county interlocal agreement for onsite bulk unleaded fuel for county vehicles. Solicitation number 2024-0474 awarded to primary vendor, Rio Valley Biofuels LLC of El Paso, Texas; secondary vendor, Tartan Oil LLC, doing business as Saratoga Rack Marketing LLC, Knoxville, Tennessee; and tertiary, Synergy Petroleum LLC, Phoenix, Arizona. Pursuant to the interlocal agreement between the County of El Paso and the City of El Paso, pricing as indicated on the tabulation sheet. Purchasing approved November 3rd, 2025. Funds are available in various accounts." Are there any items or the members of the court or public would like to pull for individual discussion?
Yes, Commissioner Coronado?
No, I don't want to pull one out. I just want to highlight item M, Judge. The Hano Music Fever Super Show will be here in El Paso at Scott at the Park this Saturday, so I want to invite everybody to really go out there and participate. You know, the county on this item is helping them out with advertising, and so I want to encourage people to go out there, and I'm sure it'll be a great concert, all from about 12 to 8 or 10, I believe, right? Something like that. It's going to be a long concert.
Anyone else? No?
Okay, we have a motion from Judge Samaniego, a second from Commissioner Coronado. The voting is open.
Aye, yes, sir.
Thank you, Judge. Item number 5A, Resolutions. Approve and adopt a resolution recognizing the joint efforts of Operation Hope and TNA Wrestling in promoting hope, dignity, and community support.
Commissioner? Thank you, Judge and Commissioners. It's really a pleasure to be able to read this resolution into the record for the court. Let's see, who's here? Come on up. Tony, come on up. Come on, come on, don't be shy. He is pretty shy, and he speaks very softly, very soft spoken.
You can't do this here, Commissioners Court.
I don't either.
All right, so.
Thank you all.
I'm going to read this resolution in the record and let everybody identify themselves and say a few words, Judge. Whereas Operation Helping People Endure, Hope, an El Paso-based nonprofit organization in El Paso, Texas, and has served the community since 1995, co-founded by Angel Gomez, whose mission is to help people endure difficult times. And whereas Total Non-Stop Action, TNA Wrestling, one of the world's top wrestling brands, has partnered with Operation Hope for multiple community outreach fundraising initiatives during November and December of 2025. And whereas on Saturday, November 22nd, 2025, at the El Paso County Coliseum, Operation Hope will hold the 30th Annual Thanksgiving Distribution for People Experiencing Food Insecurity. And whereas TNA International Champion Frankie Kazarian and reigning TNA X-Division Champion Leon Slater will join volunteers from Operation Hope for the 30th Annual Thanksgiving Food Giveaway. And whereas TNA will hold a three-day drive on December 5th through the 7th, asking fans who will attend the action-packed pro wrestling shows at the El Paso County Coliseum to bring new unwrapped toys. And whereas TNA Wrestling World Champion Mike Santana will make the formal presentation of all collected toys to Operation Hope on Monday, December 8th, 2025. And whereas Operation Hope believes that compassion in action can change lives and strengthen communities, partnering with TNA Wrestling for our Thanksgiving Food Giveaway and the TNA Toy Drive in December are an incredible opportunity to expand that mission and bring hope to even more families. And whereas TNA Wrestling's commitment to community involvement, resilience, and empowerment perfectly aligns with our values, together, we're showing that teamwork, generosity, and heart inside and outside the ring can make a lasting difference. We're proud to stand with TNA Wrestling in helping others endure with dignity, hope, and a renewed sense of community. Be it therefore resolved by the El Paso County Commissioners Court that the findings of the county and its actions approving this resolution taken at the Commissioners Court meeting are hereby approved and adopted, signed as 17th Day of November, 2025.
We have a motion from Commissioner Coronado, a second from County Judge Samaniego. The voting is open.
Welcome, everybody. Step up to the mic and identify yourself and.
Thank you all so much. My name is Ruby Gomez. I'm the co-founder of Operation Hope, named after Angel Gomez, who is the original co-founder of our organization, and we're very grateful for this opportunity to continue his legacy with help from Tony. You know, we can't do this without him. He really stepped in during my time of need to continue this, and most importantly, pairing us up with TNA. You know, Angel had left a large legacy here, and we want to continue to serve our community. So thank you guys for the opportunity and for TNA to trust in Operation Hope to continue to serve El Paso as we have for over 30 years. So we appreciate this opportunity, so thank you. This is Ross.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Ross Forman, Vice President with TNA Wrestling. Some of you guys might remember, we were here in March for a couple days, and we are thrilled to be back December 5, 6, 7 for three nights at the County Coliseum. And to partner with Ruby and Operation Hope is something we love doing in every community we go to, and to do the two things we're doing is just something, you know, we don't just want to come into the city and have some wrestling shows. We want to give back, and this is a great thing, and I think Ruby is most excited on bringing some big, strong wrestlers who are going to carry the turkeys on Saturday morning. So look forward to that.
Yes, I used to be the muscle. Angel was the pretty face.
Thank you.
I'm Patsy, one of the co-founders of Operation Hope, original co-founders. I want to thank the whole community, especially the county of El Paso, for always being available to us, to help us reach out to the community. And Tony, yes, I want to say this is the new angel because he has helped us through all of endeavors. Thank you for always helping and believing in Operation Hope, and we hope to continue serving our community. Thank you, TNA, for trusting us. We've been around for over 30 years, but we're new to you, but we want you to know that we are good ground, and we continue to help and serve each and everyone in El Paso. Thank you.
Thank you. Introduce yourselves.
I'm Arian Hernandez, the grandson of Angel Gomez. It's going to be a journey here to work with TNA, as you know, Angel was a wrestling fan before. He liked all the wrestlers, but most importantly, I'm glad that we are able to continue his legacy here in El Paso, and I'm glad I'm able to continue his journey and his chapters in El Paso.
Thank you. You know, when we say that the fruit lands close to the tree, my goodness, I mean, he has just been such an exceptional young man, and we thank you for what you continue to do. Tony, you want to say a few words about your engagement with?
No, it's great to continue the partnership with Operation Hope. Obviously, I got to know them during my days at KFOC, so I worked very closely with Angel in covering their event and promoting it. So for us to do it there at the Coliseum, and especially since he just passed away, and to do it in memory there, the Coliseum was a perfect place to do it. Talked to Ross, he was on board, but this doesn't happen without the staff. I mean, with Janet, our board, Heidi, and. I mean, with Janet, our board, Heidi and Patrick, and Thea, and our maintenance staff there because I sometimes come up with crazy ideas and they go with it. And so, I mean, just that night, that day too, on Saturday, we're doing the Thanksgiving, we're doing that in the pavilion while we're getting ready for a concert inside the Coliseum. So it just shows too, I mean, we can do different events and we're always all about helping the community first and also bringing entertainment to the county. So definitely a great partnership and it's a no-brainer to Operation Hope and TNA. So thank you.
Thank you, Tony. We always hear such great things that if you're doing it at the Coliseum, Tony and his staff take it to the next level and figure out how to make it better. So we thank you for that. So for those that don't know or might know, which probably very unlikely, but Angel Gomez was just this amazing individual that just kept doing things. He had, you know, health challenges and I don't know how he would do that. He'd put them aside, get take care of himself, and then he'd be back on Monday and he'd be right there, back on track. I couldn't ever figure out how he did that. So when we say we have an angel looking over Hope, we really do. And so we thank you for continuing that, those of us that witnessed what you did and what Hope program did. Obviously, we never want that to ever fade out and you haven't allowed that to happen and we thank you for continuing that mission. So thank you. Commissioner Coronado?
Thank you, Judge. And Ross, I hope you're gonna have a chair so that I can, the bushwhacker here can break it over white lightning over there, like we did at the event last year. We said we were gonna do it at the event last year, but I want to thank you all for this, especially during this time that we are, you know, experiencing, a lot of people are really doing, you know, they're very challenged right now because of what happened with the government shutdown. And so this is really very much appreciated from you all for doing this because I know that people are gonna be very, very happy and they're gonna be very appreciative, especially during this time of what you all are doing. So from the entire Commissioners' Court, thank you all very, very much for doing this. And let's go take a picture.
Item number six is public comment. We do have two speakers for public comment this morning. We'll start out with Ms. Elizabeth Crawford. Just like to remind folks that public comment is limited to five minutes per person. Everybody is being timed. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you.
Good morning, Elizabeth.
Good morning. And I'd like to speak briefly about fatherhood and abortion. Abortion has a devastating effect on men, though not often talked about. And though there are many men who coerce women into abortion, this is not always the case. And even those who do coerce women into abortion are not the same afterwards. I've been amazed in recent days on the sidewalk, how many times recently, young men who have been accompanying young women have later come over to me and said, "Thank you," or shook my hand in appreciation for being out on the sidewalk standing for life. There are many men who are not in agreement with abortion. Man is made in the image of God. Scripture is full of references to God as the Father of his children. In the Psalms, we read, "Like as a father pities, has compassion on his children, so the Lord pities, has compassion on them that fear Him; for He knows our frame, He remembers that we are dust." The role of a man is to lead, provide, or protect and serve his family. This past summer, we watched on the news of tragedies of children swept away in floods, many children at the girls camp in Kirk County, Texas, and one family in Ruidoslo, New Mexico. Along with many other El Pasoans, I had the opportunity to go to one of those memorial services. What was super heartbreaking, in addition to seeing the large pictures of the siblings who died, was watching the sobbing, the grief of a father whose one kid was literally swept out of his arms into the rushing water. I listened recently to the story of Eli Shirabi, the former Hamas hostage whose family was slaughtered at the Israeli kibbutz on October 7. It was heartbreaking to hear him say, "He later called his wife's family to apologize for not doing a better job of protecting his wife and kids on the day of that horrific event in Israel." The heart of a father to lead, provide, protect, and serve. On the sidewalk once a number of years ago, I was speaking with a man who was sobbing uncontrollably, literally hysterically crying. He simply did not want his baby aborted. We might think that the feeling of regret is limited to certain types of settings, at an abortion center, in a church, but even in the world of music, the words, the lyrics of two artists, David Huff, Lecrae Moore, quote, "But I was too selfish with my times, feared my dreams were not going to survive, so I dropped her off at that clinic that day a part of us died." David Huff wrote the song, "Blue Eyes Like Janie," lyrics about thinking and thinking about the aborted baby. "We were so young, only playing around, and I was ready for adventure, not for settling down. So when Janie told me she was pregnant, that she wanted to be my wife, I said, 'Wait a minute, Janie, we're only 17, we're just starting out our young lives.'" And then his thoughts, "Would she have brown hair? Did she have blue eyes? I've tried to imagine what she would look like so many times." I'm thankful that this same Psalm that speaks of God as a father to his people speaks of forgiveness. It's a forgiveness available to all who by Christ's grace would repent and trust in the Lord Jesus. We're told in Psalm 103, "He has not dealt with us after our sins, nor rewarded us according to our iniquity; for as the heaven is high above the earth, so great is His mercy toward them that fear Him." 1 John 1:9, 8 and 9, "If we say that we have no sin, we deceive ourselves, and the truth is not in us. If we confess our sins, He is faithful and just, to forgive us our sins and to cleanse us from all unrighteousness." Thank you so much. Have a good day. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Have a good day.
Thank you.
This completes all of our speakers for public comment.
Thank you.
Item number 7A from the regular agenda, receive a presentation from the El Paso Sports Commission regarding its quarterly status report.
Good morning, Judge Samaniego, Commissioner Butler, Commissioner Stout, Commissioner Holguin, Commissioner Coronado. That's a mouthful. It's great to be here with all of you today. You know, I've been reflecting back to my first time I was in Commissioners' Court. And I made the statement in an address just like this, that the sky is the limit of what can be done when people think outside the box. And I have been thinking of this, who would have thought? Who would have thought that there would ever be one person in our community that in 2008 took the initiative to think about the future? Who established an organization that will create revenue, manage a major venue that will be transparent, and let other people besides our citizens fund it financially? So it was the birth of the El Paso Sports Commission and we want to thank our founder, Brian Kennedy. Over the past 20 years, we have worked with numerous professional artists, promoters, corporations, nonprofits, and local organizations. Who would have thought we would spearhead the United States Bowling Conference Women's Tournament? El Paso was the first city the women's tournament was ever held in a major venue and not a bowling alley. This opened the door for El Paso to host the USBC, United States Bowling Congress Major Tournament. The women's tournament created $24 million in tourism revenue and the men's created $80 million in tourism revenue. And who would have thought then that Conference USA would put their faith and trust in us to host the Conference USA Tournament twice? Who would have thought that through hard work of Thea Chambers and Richard Corona, retired referee, we would work together to host an NFL referee conference training camp? That still happens to this day. This partnership opened the door for El Paso to be chosen for the NFL Women's Flag Football Tournament in partnership with Region 19 earlier this year. The goal is to become a UIL-approved sport. We are very proud to say that Leanna Bryan, a graduate from Franklin High School, and Ariel Blair, a graduate from Hanks High School, have been selected to represent El Paso on the Women's Flag National Team that will be included in the Los Angeles Olympics. There are many events at the Coliseum we host. Because of our location, concert tours make a stop in El Paso. We've seen Elvis Presley and, you know, Luis Miguel, but we've also seen for the young people, younger than us, Ariana Grande and Cardi B, one of my favorites, Pitbull, that have been on the stage, that have graced our stage many times. We've also seen Tough Heat and Bull Riding, Disney on Ice, Rhinos Hockey, and through the hard work of Tony Rodriguez, who would have thought that TNA Professional Wrestling would be chosen, the El Paso County Coliseum, for its competitions? As you know, TNA will be back in December in El Paso and El Paso will be seen once again. Speaking about our staff, who would have thought we would have our first Hispanic woman president, Janet Vargas? Janet started with our organization in the position of Administrative Assistant, promoted to Director, Director of Operations, and now she's our president. Through Janet's professionalism, she has gained the trust and respect from our promoters and our clients and is leading our organization into the future. Who would have thought that when the opportunity arose to support a non-traditional business that features a sheet of ice, gates, a hockey puck, a young man, Corey Herman, with a passion for ice hockey, and he was a player, once for the El Paso Buzzards, that the El Paso Sports Commission would assist in launching the El Paso Rhinos Hockey Organization? Who would have thought this support and partnership would feature El Paso in a national competition known as Hockeyville, sponsored by Kraft, that gave you, the county, a new roof on the El Paso Event Center and an NHL preseason hockey game? Who would have thought that the El Paso County Coliseum has hosted and continues to host fashion shows, farmers' markets, car seat giveaways, dance competitions, training facility for law enforcement, food giveaways, citizenship ceremonies, senior citizen dances, and the list goes on? Who would have thought the El Paso Sports Commission has stayed true to its basic foundation, never forgetting our goals? Promote tourism through sports tourism and other events, and continue to improve the El Paso County Coliseum? To accomplish this, it takes an experienced staff with a team attitude, an executive board that has members with business and professional backgrounds, and a strong partnership with you, the County of El Paso. My name is Heidi Costale. I've been with the Sports Commission for, since we started. And I was seeing judges and commissioners and I want to say it's a real honor to be here. But I want to leave you with one last thing. Who would have thought that the sky has no limits? Thank you.
Thank you, Heidi. Appreciate that. Thank you. Good morning, Janet.
So we're gonna present our Quarter 4 report.
Move on.
The clicker.
There you go. Okay, Yovens. Thanks, Miga.
Hi, guys. I hope all is well. We're here to present our quarterly report from July to September. And to start off, we'd like to show off some of the changes that we've been making to the venue. Our main goal right now on the changes that we're making is to make the building a little more welcoming to the promoters, to the tours, and especially to the artists backstage. We are making more changes backstage than the concourses because we're working with our budget, but we're getting there. A little video that we took for the concourse.
Next one, Miga.
One of the first changes that we've made so far is the Coliseum floor, the north entrance. And of course, we have, it's epoxy. We have to be giving it retouches because it does get beat up a little during load-ins, When they're loading in, they're rolling in cases that scratches up the floor. Bulldozers, when we're bringing in dirt for the rodeo, when they're taking the dirt The next one is the wall around the Coliseum floor. That one also gets a little beat up, so we give it a retouch maybe every four months. It gets beat up during load-ins, load-outs by when we hang banners, bulldozers, taking out the dirt, bringing in the dirt. Then some of the walls around the venue have colors that are very crowd-friendly or high-traffic friendly, so we're trying to change that out. Even though we clean it by the next event, it gets a little dirty again. So we're also trying to add color to bring a little more life to the Coliseum. And then this is our VIP room that's used for conferences, meetings, and small gatherings. So one of the things that we've been talking about is getting rid of the beige around the Coliseum and adding more color to it. This is, we decided to go with the color palette that we've been using through the Coliseum. It's like a blue-gray with white and we used it for our VIP room. It opened up the room a little more and it just makes it a little brighter, not so dark. Then heading backstage, this is one of the walls that always bother me because it's right next to the entrance of the main dressing room where the artists come in through. So again, we're taking out the beige. We decided to go with black and we feel like it gives it more of a, like a backstage edgy And then this is one of my favorite projects so far. This is, at the Coliseum, we call it the skate room, but it's more of a multifunctional room. It can be used as a dressing room, a lounge room, a VIP meet and greet. It had the beige again. We decided to add some color. We went with red and black and we hung some string lights and, I don't know, we just wanted to give it more. We. 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 And, I don't know, we just wanted to give it more of an edgy, warmer environment, so that when the tours are eating back there, it doesn't just look so beige-y. And then, we're going to...
You can skip that one.
Yeah, we'll skip that one.
Now we get to events. The big thing about Janet is getting rid of, is trying to, like she said, getting rid of the beige, using different colors. And what you saw there is just the start of it. And so, we definitely want to put new murals on their vinyls that covers that. And so that way, like she said, perfect example is just giving it a more welcoming look when you come in. And it just, it makes it look bigger. Like I can tell you, if you ever go to the Skate Room, the catering room, to see it is complete night and day. So, that was Janet's projects, and she's doing great on it. So, we're working on that. So, that's pretty good.
Thank you.
Started with the quarterly report on the event. So, we had Texas Slam, that's a local lucha libre. They come in and they like to use the Judging Arena. They get a good crowd coming in. And so, they actually bring in wrestlers too, from CMLL, out of Mexico. And so, for some of these events, the wrestlers come in, and they're well-known in El Paso and Ciudad Juarez. So, we had about eight wrestlers come in from out of town. They stay for a couple days because they start promoting the show, do the meet-and-greets at the car dealer places. And so, it's definitely great to have them. And they did this on July 5th, which was a Fourth of July weekend. But it worked out perfect for them. They had a good turnout for this event. Ring Wars. So, this was our first Ring Wars without Jennifer Han. So, or Stephanie Han, sorry. But no, they still wanted to come back. They did great. A full night of boxing. There was about nine bouts. And so, definitely an action-packed night. And they're coming back again in March. And so, that was a lost-loser, but it's definitely, boxing is still here in El Paso, and they still love it, no matter who's fighting. So, it's definitely great to be working with Marshall and Ring Wars and Tree here in El Paso. Pedro Fernandez. Believe it or not, he's never been to El Paso. So, this was his first time here, performing in El Paso. He performed at the El Paso County Coliseum. And as you can tell, he had a great night. That was a sold-out night, about 3,500 fans. And so, we already look forward to him coming back again. But definitely a great night with Pedro, and he definitely brought the energy, so it was a good night. Palomas Norteño. They were actually here last year around the same time in July. They came back this year again because they had a sold-out. They even sold more seats this time. So, we had to push the stage back, added more seats. And they sold that night out. It's about 4,500 to about 5,000. And they already booked for next year, so they're coming back. So, we look forward to having Palomas Norteño. So, that's one of our good concerts that we look forward to coming every year. Saturday Market. We continue to do the markets. They're out there in the pavilion. Luckily, in July and August, even though it's a little hot, but definitely good turnout on that. So, we work with Kaleidoscope Art Space, and they do different themes throughout the year. And they wanted to do a Saturday market, so we said, "Why not?" So, definitely fun to do those for the community, and it's free, open, food trucks, music, and all these art vendors. Bronco. The interesting thing about that, and we kind of touched on it in the media too, is that Bronco was actually scheduled to perform August 3rd. We had the shooting at Walmart. So, obviously, the city shut down and everything. They weren't able to perform. So, this was their first time back since then. And so, we were able to bring, we tried to bring them around that time too so that they could do Memorial, but they were able to come in on the 16th. Great turnout. We had about 3,000 people there. And just, and they remember. We had a chance to talk to them backstage, and they were just happy to be back, asked about how the community was doing. And so, it was definitely a special night for having Bronco here. Naturalization ceremonies. These we do every two months. So, in this one that we had in August, they're usually ranging from about 600 to 700 people that are coming in and getting naturalized. And so, I believe this one in August was about 600 people. But definitely one of those cool events that we love doing, and it just shows the hard work that these people are doing to become citizens, and it's a great event that we love doing at the Coliseum. Saturday Market, another Saturday Market we had. This was kind of like an outer space theme, so we had still vendors, and they did like a movie night. So, as you can see, they had the truck there, and they projected a movie. And so, it was cool to just see something different. And like I said, we try and do, we work with Kaleidoscope Art Space to just kind of do different events there. And they come up with these cool themes, and it's like, let's roll with it. So, this one was pretty cool. Prep One Media Day. One of the things we always do with Prep One, it's kind of get back to, it's all schools for the county of El Paso that come in for football and cheerleading. They come in and kind of do the media rounds, take pictures, do different interviews. So, one of those events that we like doing with Prep One and giving back to the community. And it's a cool thing to see. As you can see in some of the pictures, they really go all out. Martial Arts Expo. This is one of our favorites. Is that we were actually, there was this organizer who owns a local jiu-jitsu here in El Paso. He goes, "We want to do an expo. You guys have a huge floor. How do we do this?" And so, we came in, and what you can see there is five different events. You have karate, taekwondo, jiu-jitsu, MMA, and boxing. That was all happening at the same time. So, you could just walk around, go see taekwondo. If you got bored of that, go see karate. You wanted to see MMA, it's right there. So, that was pretty cool to do, all tournament. They had, so about 27 people came from out of town to participate in whether it was taekwondo, jiu-jitsu, or MMA and boxing. So, and you can see the little kids too. They actually had that. That was pretty cool to see. Sunday Market. So, it goes back to our Sunday Market that we do. This was the oldies. So, we had antique cars, food, music, just a nice Sunday at the Coliseum. So, it was pretty fun. Juvenile Probation Bank. But this was actually pretty cool. The juvenile probation department wanted to do something for their employees, so they asked if they could come into the Coliseum. And they wanted to do a petting zoo. You can see the bull riding there, and then also the jumping balloons. So, had different events, and definitely want to, yeah, I mean, get back in its accountability too, so why not? Come use it. And so, we did the juvenile probation bank. Yudi. So, this is her 30-year back. She's been here every year. So, continues to come to the El Paso County Coliseum. Always has a great show. About 3,000 people show up. And so, it's just, it's cool to have those kind of constant concerts that you see back-to-back-to-back, that they love coming back to El Paso. EV Options. That was another one that we were doing the same time that we were loading in for Yudi. We worked with EV Options. And El Paso Electric, they were actually using our parking lot in the front, as you can see, and signing up people to test and drive electric vehicles. So, just one of the things where we can do some concert inside and load in, and still have an event in the parking lot, whether it be in the day. So, definitely love doing those kind of events too. September 17th and 19th, the El Paso County Fair and Gala. They do the fair outside in the pavilion, and then they have the gala that night inside the Coliseum. So, always interesting. I don't know if that turkey will make it, but we'll see what happens, but definitely fun event. September 20th. So, this will be interesting when you come see the days. This, we had a 915 card show and collectibles. Over 100 vendors are there in the County Coliseum, selling sports memorabilia, collectibles, things like that. There was one lady from Albuquerque. I don't know what kind of card it was, but it was worth $20,000. They actually had to escort her to her card at the end of the show. But, so they look forward to coming back. We look forward to having them back because it was just a huge turnout for this event. They usually do it at the hotels in their conference rooms. He said he needed more space. He came to us, and we said, "Why not? Let's do it. Let's see what happens." It's a free event. There's no admission fee, so it was actually pretty cool. Got me a Babe Ruth, what is it, those Funk Pops? So, that was pretty cool. It's in my office. But fun event. On top of that, while that's going on, in the pavilion with Kaleidoscope, we're doing Battle of the Bands and Sedves Office. So, that's going on on the same day at the same time. So, people were jumping around from the collectibles to the Battle of the Bands. And then, the next slide, we had Lucha Libre going on in the Judging Arena, and so, we had that. So, people were going, they said, "You know, we were here for Lucha Libre, but we saw what was going on in the pavilion, in the Coliseum, so we walked around there." And you just had a full day at the Coliseum. On top of that, what was going on, next slide, is we had the El Paso Rhino Season Opener Weekend. So, you had four events on the same day at the same time. And that, K-Fox came out and did this around that, so that was pretty cool. But just talking about the use of the Coliseum and what we can do. And like I've always told you guys, it's the best entertainment venue in El Paso. You can do all these events. Parking is good. We work well with the zoo if we need it. Just this past, what, two weeks ago, we had a sold-out night with Intocable. We had a Dia de los Muertos art market, and we had the rightness going on. It's, I mean, it's unbelievable. So, that's just one of the things to show you on that one. And then, we ended the year with Molotov. And who cannot have a great night with Molotov? Won't name some of their songs, but if you know Molotov, you know Molotov. So, definitely a great concert on that. Well, what you'll get to see coming up shortly too with the finance part, and we reached our goal. And one thing is bringing in these different type of events because we did lose four concerts. We lost four concerts. There's no doubt about it. We lost those because of visas. But we were still able to reach that million-dollar goal that we have in doing that because between, when Janet and I were looking at numbers in July, we're like, "How are we going to do this? We're a little short." But bringing in these type of events, whether it be community, local, doing four events on the same day at the same time, it's possible. So, that's what we're looking at. When you have a partnership like with TNA that's coming back, they could have came back next year. They could have came back two years from now. They're coming back the same time, in the same year, within months. So, it shows the need that people love boxing. People love local events. People love different stuff. They're giving from Battle of the Bands to card collectibles. And that's what we're trying to do, to kind of overcome those obstacles. Even an example, Miguel Bosse, we had that concert just about a month ago. We were within hours on that day of the show of canceling that because they were within hours of not getting their visas approved. So, we stress a lot. That's why I let my hair grow so you don't see the bobs, but that's some of the things that we're, the challenges that we're facing. So, as we look forward to the new year, we're looking at different events coming up. I mean, we have Heart coming in March. So, it's kind of looking at those kind of different concerts, whether it be country, EDM, and other Latin artists because they're still coming too, but it's just, those are kind of the problems. But for us to overcome that is, it just shows, I mean, the staff between Janet, our board, the maintenance staff, we can't do it without the maintenance staff because I can tell you even, for example, for this weekend, we have Hobby coming in Thursday. He's actually coming in two days before. He'll be here tomorrow, Wednesday, rehearsing at the County Coliseum because his tour starts here. His tour starts here in El Paso, and then he travels. So, right after this, we got to get back to work again after we just had five days of the circus. So, we do Hobby. We turn that around because then we have Amanda Miguel on Friday. Turn that around because then we have cello the next day on Saturday. Then, we turn that around because we're doing a fashion show on Sunday. So, we're busy, and we can't do it without our staff. And so, I definitely want to commend them for being able, we get there at 6:00 in the morning, back until 2:00 AM when everyone's gone, and then back again at 6:00. But they're doing it, and we're just trying to keep busy and have fun.
Thank you, Tony. A lot of work, but a lot of creativity. Thank you.
So, Thea, we'll talk about the sports tourism because even, that's busier too.
Tony, really quickly, before you step away, can I ask you a question? Is there a way to know, like for the concerts, the sold-out concerts, is there a way to know from ticket sales, like the zip codes that people are coming into El Paso from?
Yes, and you can actually see from out of town. I'm actually working on that report for our fiscal year that we turn in. And so, what I can't tell if I remember correctly, and I would have to go to my notes. I know just on ticket master sales and some of like the art markets itself and Rhinos, we estimate that over like 140,000 people have been to that building within this fiscal year.
Wow.
And so, unfortunately, I can't compare it to last year because I don't have those records. But, and I can show you what I have so that way you guys can see what I'm doing now to kind of keep track of all the events that we have. The ice rink, I can tell you, is being used every day. That was the tedious one of putting everything in because you can just say, "Oh, well, they use the ice rink every day." Cool, but who's using it? You have like five different organizations that are using that in the morning, whether it be blade skating, the El Paso Figure Skating Club, the Adult Hockey League, the Youth Hockey League, the Rhinos themselves. And so, I can show you that breakdown. Like I said, it was very tedious, but I did it. So, I'm trying to keep up with it. But it's, it is, it's very crazy to see just what is going on and how, and people that are coming.
That would be great.
Yeah, you could definitely see that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gurulal. Yeah, thank you, Judge. You know, one of the things I know that, Tony, that both I and Judge Semaniego spoke to, our Mexican consulate, Maurice Viva, and he's, has met with the US consulate about resolving the visa issue. We know how that touchy is with our current administration, but he's hoping that we can make some headway in that area because losing four concerts obviously is quite a bit of a, you know...
Oh, we do that and we break a record. We have those four concerts.
Yeah.
We easily break a record from last year, easily, without a doubt. But I will tell you, like I said, it's going after those other events. You guys were all at State of the County. Amazing. Walking out, we had already three people saying, "Hey, I need to give you a call. We want to book our event here. We want to book this." I just got a text message right now from United Way, so I got to get back to them because they want to do a drive, a food drive there at the Coliseum this weekend. So, we'll try and fit them in between Operation Hope and what we have. But they're seeing that. People are seeing that, the changes that are making. And so, I hope you all hear about it. And obviously too, if you hear it, let us know because we can't fix what we don't know. But, yeah, when you talk about the visa, it's difficult.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi, everyone. I've not met you yet, Commissioner Butler. Welcome. Welcome, David, Judge, of course, Eliana, Sergio. The part that I'm going to talk about with you all is what is it that we do when it comes to sports tourism? First of all, I am amazed to be able to work with the group of people that I work with. I feel like we do tremendous work with very few people. And so, it's an honor and a privilege to work with these folks. Tony even stepped in for me for a while when I was having some health issues, and my husband was as well. So, we love what we do. So, what is the role of the Sports Commission? We're a resource for the generation in support of sporting events that result in tourism revenue across local, regional, and national markets. Now, our staff, it's our staff of three. We hold certifications through several, well, primarily through Sports Events and Tourism Association, which is called Sports ETA for short. And they do have a Sports Tourism Learning Institute where we each have gotten our credentials. Now, Janet has gotten her credential in Sports Tourism Specialist. Tony has his. I've been here since, you know, we learned how to spell sports tourism. So, I have several different designations in my 17 years. And I continue to try to become educated and understand exactly what's going on in the industry because it is changing, and it has a lot of variables to it. So, how do you do this? There we go. How do we accomplish this? There's a lot of ways that we get our leads, if you want to call them. We subscribe to an online app called Play Easy, which is specifically for prospecting and networking. And that's how we speak with other industry professionals. That's where we find RFPs, that hosting organizations, non-governing bodies, they're looking for a host city for their particular event. That's where we find out that information, is through that venue right there. Word-of-mouth referrals. I get a lot of word-of-mouth referrals because we do a good job. We strive to figure out what the sporting event is, figure out how best we can serve them, figure out how to help them with hotels, with venue rental. We work very closely, obviously, with the sports park, with escarrete, and with the city parks. And I do a lot of internet research. So, sometimes I just can stumble upon something in Facebook that I didn't know about before, and then we go after it. I spend about 40% of my time prospecting. That's just looking for events. I spend another 15% reviewing RFPs, responding with letters of intent, or bidding, or preparing bid applications for an event. And I spend another 35% servicing the events. So, and I'll let you know what servicing is in just a moment. These are the organizations that I work with on a consistent basis. The Hoteliers, Parks and Rec, the county, obviously, the university, The Hoteliers, Parks and Rec, the county, obviously, the university, all of the school districts, large and small, the big ones and the little ones, the Cowboys, the Texans, the NFL, the Rhinos, USSA, which is a sports sanctioning organization for baseball, softball, fast pitch. WSL, which is another one of those organizations that sanctions tournaments. USA Wrestling and USBC, of course. There's a process that I go through, I call it the three E's. The first thing that I do is I educate myself on the sport that I'm dealing with. Every sport is different. It's really not some, it's not cookie cutter, it's not just, okay, here's a field, go play. You know, there's a little more to it. There's different field sizes depending upon the sport. There's, there's adult sports, there's youth sports, and they each have their own way of doing things. And they each have their own rules for travel. They each have their own, if you will, personality. So I know a little about a lot of different sports. So I continue to try and educate myself on what I need to know. Some of the questions, the second thing I look at is, I sit down with them and we talk about expectation. What is it that you're expecting from this event? Is it a brand new event? Is it an event you've had before? And if so, how has it been historically? What kind of crowds has it generated? What number of teams are coming from out of town to attend your event? Typically, it's 30 to 35% of teams for any sporting event are coming from out of our city. Okay? So, I mean, it's important to know that. I find out where the athletes are traveling from and how long they expect to stay. And you'll see when I show you a spreadsheet shortly, I come up with an estimated amount of hotel room nights that could be generated, and then at the end, we do the actual. And they're never the same number. Sometimes they're better than, sometimes they're less than, but we sit down and we do a recoup. Execution, I help with securing hotel room rates, rates that they like. I do that either through Hotel Planner, or I have a number of hotels that I work with directly to try and, you know, get a good rate for the folks that are coming in. You know, they have their own loyalty programs. So it's different from a convention or a meeting because typically those are happening in one location. So it's very easy to determine how many people were there and how long they were there. But typically, a sporting event can be happening in six different locations. It can be happening at the sports park, and it can be happening at four or five other city fields, all at the same time. So the challenge is to come up with an accurate assessment of really how many people stayed here and how long did they stay here. I do research, well, I covered that. We do provide sponsorship in the form of advertising, cash support, welcome incentives, and discount offers from area retailers. We also conduct surveys. It's a QR code survey that myself and one or two volunteers try to be at every event in every location and try to survey as many people as we can. Now, we incentivize that by offering them, if it's at the sports park, you'll get a hot dog and a Coke if you fill out the survey. And I'm going to stand here and wait for you to do that, and then I'm going to hand you a coupon for, because people, I found that if I just gave them the survey, oftentimes it went undone. And what I need is actual numbers. I need actual data. So we do that, and that's part of our event recap. You know, what did we do well? What can we do differently? Who can we talk to to expand your event, to include something else, or to include people from another state or another? You know, El Paso is challenged. We don't have, we've got limits in our venues. Oh, not letting me go. Okay. We've got limits in our venues, we've got just our physical and geographical location. We're that other part of Texas. And so if, you know, it's difficult to get people to travel from San Antonio, Dallas, Houston. It's very difficult because it's very expensive to travel. So the answer is, why do we always have to travel? It's because the others don't want to. So it's finding ways to get them to want to is the challenge. So, you know, we work with that. The events that we had, if you'll look, they're separated July, August, and September. The first column of numbers indicates what they anticipated their hotel room nights to be. Now, that could be based on historical, what they did last year, what they did the year before, what they hoped for. And then I look at that and I record that, and I follow up with them and I stay with them along the way to see, are we really getting close to that? Because what, you know, how can we help? Can we get close to that or? And you see, we came pretty close in the Hector Flórez showcase. 302 rooms instead of the 350 he thought he would have. How did I get that number, 302? It was a combination of surveys and a combination of talking to the operator and having him survey the people who are coming. He is the best resource as to who's coming from out of town. So I get information from him, and then I also collect surveys. Regrettably, I, you may have 300 people coming into town, I am not going to be able to survey all 300 of them. So I kind of use the surveys as a backup to kind of, you know, just help me substantiate my estimate. If anything, help me to prove that, okay, 57% of the people at this tournament, by their own admission, don't live here. And that's further substantiated because the survey asked them for their zip code. And I tell them, we're asking you for your zip code because we want to enter you in a drawing for some free hotel room nights next time you come, which we do, we do actually have a drawing. So that's kind of how, it's not a precise science. And if anything, that is the most difficult thing to get people to understand, is it's not a meeting or convention. This isn't that. It is a different animal. Very rarely do you have an event, I just finished an arm wrestling tournament, that had a host hotel. Why? Because the event was being held there. They used the Best Western Plus to hold the event, and they used the lobby and one of the meeting rooms. Well, it's very easy to get a pickup report from that hotelier. And so I know exactly because that's where everybody was required to stay. State of play is how you figure out who's exactly there. And unfortunately, many sports organizations don't like to do state of play. It's about, you know, if it's about, well, youth or adult, people have their own loyalty programs that they like to use because they get points or because it's less expensive, whatever the reason is. And you can see the numbers for the quarter there. I won't read each and every one of them because you, you can, you have that information. Hey, stop. Oh, there we go. Okay, our numbers for the year are down a little bit from last year. There's a, I wish I could tell you that there was one reason for that. Part of it is the political and financial climate that we find ourselves in. Again, the visa situation. But I'm not going to say that that's a huge amount of it because sports, you know, they go up and down. When you lose a major organizer who would bring you seven or eight tournaments because you can't give him what he wants, when what he wants is just, you know, a piece of the gate maybe, or something that, that we just don't do. Sports is competitive. Sports operators know where they can go and get what they need because it's a business. They aren't just doing it because they love kids. You know, it is a business. So we have to try to leverage meeting their business concerns with, you know, not going to jail, basically. So that's what, that's what we deal with, that's what we do. We lost a tournament operator that brought us seven tournaments, we lost him. We, the NFL Football Officials Clinic was down in numbers because of a situation they were having with another entity. And so I was able to pick up an equivalent number of events to, you know, fill in for those guys. But you know, again, the numbers are, you know, the numbers are going to be what the numbers are going to be. And some of these were first time events and they'll grow because they had a good, they had a good time at our sports park. They appreciated how we treated them. They appreciated the little things that we did, that we didn't have to do. And so that word of mouth will get us more tournaments next year. The decrease is about 33%, which to me is significant. But, you know, all I can say is, you know, it is what it is, and we will work harder next year to try and, you know, I'm looking for new operators all the time. I just added four new operators to the sports park last week. So we, the sports park, I'm given 12 dates and 12 dates only to book tournaments. 12, two weekends a month is all I have to book tournaments. I've turned some tournaments away because I've already satisfied my two tournament a month requirement. And that is because we have leagues, and leagues are very crucial and very critical. And, you know, leagues are based on, you know, you pay your league fee and that entitles you to X number of games. And we can't say, oh, I'm sorry, you can't play on that date because we have a tournament. You know, that, that's crazy. So I fill up the dates that I do have, and we take it from there. Moving forward, I've discussed some of the obstacles in being able to do this job effectively. And one of the biggest ones is, you know, sports isn't, isn't a state of play bubble. It's not a meeting or a convention. It's just not. People are going to stay where they choose to stay, and then you've got Airbnbs which you cannot really account for. So we do, we do the most precise guessing that we can. So we're constantly trying to improve our methodologies to come up with accurate numbers on our lodging estimates. We're trying to encourage more openness from the hotels about who is staying in your hotel and why. Who is staying there? The obstacle seems to be a reluctance to ask people why they're staying in the hotel. I don't know if this is privacy issues, I'm not sure what it is, but there's a reluctance for them to divulge who was staying and why. So we're going to work around that the best way that we can. I submit requests for rooming accommodations through an organization called Hotel Planner that goes out to every hotel in the city, and the ones that want to respond to my type of tournament will respond and give a rate. But I'm trying to take that one step further. I'm trying to find a handful of hotels who, first of all, want youth sports business. That's multiple people in a room. Not every hotel wants that, okay? Who want to have a complimentary breakfast for the kids. Not every hotel does that. So I'm trying to find hotels close to the venues that I typically work with that will offer a price that is better than any price they can get on the internet. I need a price that's better than Expedia, Hotels.com, whatever. Whatever your loyalty program is, I need a, I need a rate that's better than that. And that needs to be the guaranteed El Paso Sports Commission rate. So we are working with some hotels right now to provide that, that are close to the sports park. And educating stakeholders as to the nature and behaviors of sports and how they travel and attract non-local participation. I think the biggest expectation is, you know, what are you doing with the money that you're giving us, that we're giving you? What are you doing with it? Well, this is what I'm doing with it. And this is, you know, this is our best estimate and judge of who came to the city and stayed in our hotels and ate at our restaurants and, you know, did the sports tourism thing. So I did include a link to a state of the industry report sponsored by Sports ETA where organizations around the country were surveyed. I'll let you, it's many pages, I will let you look at that yourself. That will also give you an idea of what the venues are out there and why these folks are attracting national and regional attention. I think we do well with the marginal regional attention we're able to attract, but what we really specialize in is teaching our local operators who do it for the love of the sport, how to branch out, how to grow, how to attract more people. How can I help you in attracting more people from Arizona, Oklahoma? Because we're not generally going to get them from, you know, other parts of Texas. So the panhandle sometimes. Another thing that accounted for our drop, high school sports, many sports, if they are affiliated and called State of Texas, whatever organization, they have a rotation, okay? Which means they're only coming around to El Paso maybe every fifth tournament. So they're not going to come back every year. We were fortunate to get some really large ones because it was our turn last year, and we were given permission to host these events. But, you know, we've got to wait our turn to get the next tournament like that. So that's, that's it. I just want to, I just, I can't say enough about our partnership with the NFL, with the Cowboys and the Texans. We had actually 38 schools in the community participating, 118 games in three weeks. The Dallas Cowboys and the Houston Texans paid for everything, and we had one champion, which is, which was America's High School. And in fact, there's a film crew today at America's interviewing the girls and the coach and some other folks for an upcoming CBS little piece that ESPN does about the growth of flag football. We're also looking forward to having a 30 for 30, that'll be another film crew that comes out and kind of does a historical thing on, you know, El Paso High School Stadiums was the first Friday Night Lights, right here in El Paso. And they love that place, and that's a story that they want to tell. And they continue to amplify El Paso as being a better community than what the world thinks of us. The world thinks of us as, you know, I don't know, riding around in horse and buggy and shooting people and machetes and drugs being thrown over the wall and, you know, that's just what the media has told them about El Paso. But what the NFL understands is El Paso is just hardworking families who love their kids, who love football, who support, who support them. And there's nothing that they won't do for their kids. Family is everything, and family does everything together here. And that's something that they don't see everywhere. So that was the attraction to bringing, giving El Paso an opportunity to be showcased in this manner. Directly, there was approximately $185,000 put into El Paso through uniforms, through paying officials, through paying for transportation, through paying El Paso Sports Network, through, what else did they do? Officials, a coach's stipend so that every coach got, because the schools didn't have the money for this. So that was the biggest obstacle is we want to do this thing, how do we pay for it? So we found a way to pay for it, and it was very successful. And our next step is really pushing it to UIL. So if you commissioners have found value in this, I would like to ask you, and I will help you, to put together a letter of support, understanding what, what having girls' flag football has meant to your constituents. We had four scholarship offers from our three week season. We have one girl, one, one coach from one of the schools who's been hired at another university, an NAIA university, to be in charge of the flag program. So flag is growing, flag is amazing, we got in at the right time. And again, I can't thank you all enough for your support. We may ask you to go to Austin at some point and sit in a UIL meeting and cheer for El Paso and girls' flag, but that's, that's what we're doing. That's it, I think. Have I covered it all?
Yeah, thank you.
Shut up, Dea, you have. Be quiet.
Thank you.
The last thing is our quarterly financial report. I'm going to pass these out to you guys.
Thank you.
I'll go by that one. I messed it up, so we had to print it out and do it, but I'm not good at math and I put numbers. The right numbers are just added in the right box.
Any questions? Any?
That's just for your view, as you can see from last year to this year.
Yeah, so our quarterly total from July to September is 201,199. The annual total for 2025 that was contributed to the county was 1,084,475. And as you guys can see, from 2024 to 2025, there are changes every month, but every month is, every month is different. And like Tony mentioned earlier, this year we did lose four big tours and that had an impact on the total.
Great job. Any questions? Any? Janet, thank you for stepping in. You're like a quiet force. In a quiet way, you do some amazing things, so thank you. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Heidi, and thank you.
Judge, before we move on, I'd like to ask if we could take a public comment once again? We did have somebody else that was signed up to speak.
Okay.
I'd like to call up Mr. DeAndre Cameron.
Good morning.
I'll be reading my comments.
I'll be reading my comments from a speech that I wrote. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is DeAndre Cameron. I'm a concerned citizen and former Texas Peace Officer here in El Paso. I'm here today because I witnessed a growing problem in our courts, one that affects countless families, especially fathers who are simply trying to be a part of their children's lives. There's a pattern of attorneys doing the bare minimum, withdrawing from cases when clients ask them to do their jobs, and judges routinely approving these withdrawals without asking the basic question of why. In my own experience, critical motions were filed at the last possible moment and allowed to lapse without hearings. This isn't just negligence, it's a systemic failure that punishes anyone who expects diligence from their attorney. At the same time, I've seen a troubling pattern in how the District Attorney's Office handles certain cases. Domestic violence cases are being accepted and criminal warrants issued before full investigations are complete. Witness statements are missing, suspect interviews are never taken. Cases that should be turned over for, returned back for further investigation are instead filed with the hope that the defendant will take a plea bargain, even when the DA office knows the case is weak. This practice not only wastes resources but also damages lives, especially the lives of men falsely accused who are pressured into guilty pleas just to move on. And when these same men try to report parental alienation or interference with child custody, their concerns are dismissed. Yet, under Texas Penal Code 25.03, keeping a child from their lawful parent is a felony. Our system enforces 25.05 criminal non-support aggressively against fathers, but almost never against the 2503 against parents who deny visitation. There's a double standard and it's time we talk about it honestly. I'm asking this court to encourage a policy review and roundtable that includes the District Attorney's Office, judiciary, and the Council of Judges to examine how attorney withdrawals are approved, why incomplete cases are being filed, and how we can encourage, I'm sorry, ensure gender-neutral enforcement of family-related offenses. I'm not here to attack anyone. I'm here to ask for accountability, transparency, and fairness, values I upheld for a decade in law enforcement and values our justice system must hold above all else. Thank you for your time and for giving me a voice, an opportunity today, even though I just don't fully believe in the system as much anymore. Something I forgot to put inside my speech, I do want to just state that this is an attempt to minimize real victims of domestic violence as far as my statements go. I did make a packet for each of you, if you don't mind me giving it to you. It contains my original speech, a letter I also wrote to many judges here and any office that I thought was relevant. It's a three-page letter that I, that I wrote and even a proposed, proposed.
We need, we need your comments on the microphone, sir.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
And I'm sorry, what was the comment that you?
Yeah, just to make sure when, if you make a comment, it's, it's to the microphone.
Okay, I apologize. Yes, but basically the packet just contains my speech from today, a three-page letter that I sent to probably about 50 different people within this court buildings here in El Paso, and a proposed resolution just to give an idea of where my mindset is and hope that something happens. It's just, it's unfair process here in El Paso. And what's happening with the attorneys, and I'm not saying all attorneys, there's some really good attorneys out there, but there's some attorneys, it's borderline deceptive business practice what they're doing, taking our money. And when we're asking for them to do their job, they're just withdrawing or just not doing what they were paid to do. It's, it's a crime, but they get to hide behind the fact that they're a lawyer and some of the judges are approving their withdrawals just to walk away. It's not right. But thank you all.
No, we thank you, you know, we appreciate your feedback and taking the time as a concerned citizen, so we're very appreciative and we'll take this to heart. Thank you.
I appreciate all of you. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Mr. Cameron, we also have our DRO office coming up and Mr. Bishop also, just to talk to you outside to see what we can do. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
And I sit on the Justice Council, if you, if you'll get with my staff, precinct four.
Okay.
We'll talk.
I sure will.
Thank you for that, Commissioner.
Continuing with item number 8A, Auditor. Discuss and take appropriate action regarding overages and shortages for the period of April 1st, 2025 through September 30th, 2025.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Barbara Parker, County Auditor. For this particular item, Local Government Code 157-903 states that the Commissioners' Court may provide for the indemnification of elected or appointed county officers against personal liability for the loss of county funds incurred by the officer in the performance of their official duties if the loss was not resulted from the officer's negligence or criminal action. As a point of efficiency, this is something we've done over the last couple of years as my office accumulates the information and brings it to you once every six months for approval. We've reviewed the shortages. The shortages for the last six months were $415.30, which is only 0.005, 005% of the revenues that the county brings in. We did not find anything to indicate that there was criminal negligence or criminal action or negligence resulting as, as a cause of any of these. So our recommendation is that you find that the officers are not negligent and you indemnify them for this amount.
And that's in the amount of $415.30, correct?
Yes, sir. And that's for the six-month period of April 1st through September 30th of 2025.
We have a motion from Commissioner Olguin and a second from Judge Samaniego. Voting is open.
It's not coming up. I don't know why, but I vote I.
Thank you, sir. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number 9A, Human Resources. Receive an update, discuss and take appropriate action regarding House Bill 718 and the County Tax Assessor Collector's Office. And we do have one speaker signed up to comment on this item as well.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Valeria Fernandez with the Human Resources Department. As requested by Commissioners' Court, the Human Resources Department is here to provide the weekly update on the Tax Assessor Collector's Office and its ongoing processes, progress with HB 718 operations. Today, we will be updating the Court regarding staffing levels, overtime comp time usage, and workload backlogs, highlighting the actions taken since last week, any measurable progress achieved, and any ongoing challenges that may require continued attention. So the Tax Office currently has six vacancies. Of these vacancies, two will be filled in January. The, of the remaining four that are, they will be filled internally. So two promotions will be made effective on November 24th, and there's three internal background checks that are in progress to fill behind those. Or one is to fill behind, and then three for the, three that are already existing. We have some positions that were posted last week and have since closed, and HR has initiated the testing process on those in anticipation of the entry-level positions. So we're diligently working to expedite any recruitment efforts. Of the $20,000 that has been allocated in overtime, the Tax Office has utilized almost $11,000 so far. And as of Friday, November 14th, the backlog is 2,161 transactions in web dealer. And this was a slight increase of 282 from last, what we reported last week. HR will continue to monitor staffing, training, and process adjustments in partnership with the Tax Office and continue to report to the Court. And as Caesar said, there is a dealer in the audience who'd like to provide some comments to the Court.
Do we know if there's any more Saturdays scheduled?
We have not been made aware of any other Saturday sessions to be scheduled.
I'd like to call up Mr. Luis Fierro.
Good morning.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. First of all, I want to thank you guys for, on behalf of all the dealers of El Paso for helping us out. What you guys have been doing has been helping amazingly. When we started this, this journey, we were about 8,000 deals backed up. This morning, I did speak to Angela. On behalf of Mr. Gonzalez, he's going to be out of town for two weeks. So I had a communication with Angela this morning. This morning, there was 2,010 deals backlog. Everything is helping. What you guys are doing is amazing. I want to thank you for that. Going back to you, what you have asked, Mr. Gonzalez confirmed that the first two Saturdays of December are going to be worked. So he's going to be doing that. He told me to let you guys know that. Everything is going great, but we, we're kind of encountering a little issue. Monday to Friday is 100% of what we expect from employees. Working them on Saturdays is 120%. Mr. Gonzalez has been impacted with the amount of people calling in. This morning, 16% of the office called in. Friday was 21%. So the employees are feeling that they're being overworked. So if we could fill out those vacancies, I mean, as soon as possible, that could help us reduce the stress on the employees. But everything right now is, is going amazing. We, we thank, I mean, we, we knocked it down from a weight from 19 to 22 days, we're down to four to five days, which is something acceptable. Right now, as we sit, we're, we're perfect. We, we are perfect. The only issue is that I was bringing up to Human Resources, for the month of October, I had four sales, which is, it's normal for, for the time period. But I showed them the, the amount of sales I had for January. January, I had nine sales this year, something reasonable to work with. February, I jumped into 48 sales. March, 92 sales. So we're going to have a drastic increment coming at the beginning of the year. And if we get the staff that we have, we're working on 120%. We're not going to be able to satisfy a backlog or, I mean, if we grow, like where we sell, where we're, what I did this past year, we're thinking we're going to have a backlog of about 16,000 deals. So it is going to skyrocket immediately if we don't think on a plan for the, for the beginning of the year. But I mean, this plan that we have right now is working right now with the numbers we have, but I'm not pretty sure it's going to work during the peak season. That'll be it. Thank you. Thank you for everything.
We thank you, you know, your patience and professionalism, your feedback, we, we take it to heart, so thank you for that. We appreciate that.
Likewise. We, we thank you for helping us and this thing is out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Judge, Commissioners, I don't know if Valeria, so during the two weeks that Mr. Gonzalez is out of office, there's no one who can give us updates in that time? Mr. Gonzalez, but Mr. Gonzalez told us that we wouldn't be able to get updates in that time?
Yes, that's correct. In his notice, let me have my notes, that he will be out of the office for the next two Mondays and therefore unable to provide an update. Therefore, each hour would have limited information.
Judge?
Commissioner Coronado?
You know, I, I find it kind of troubling that we're getting information about our Tax Assessor Collector's Office issues with staff from a dealer's association rather than from somebody from the Tax Assessor Collector's Office. I heard information on Friday that a few of the locations were closed, but then I heard from somebody saying that the main location at the Scotty was closed. So I went right immediately after our luncheon and sure enough, the gate was closed. The only gate open was the exit gate. I went in and saw various individuals coming out and informing me that it was closed with no sign, no nothing.
Commissioner?
This was Friday afternoon.
Yes, sir. We do plan to have an item on next Monday for executive session for the Court to, we haven't communicated this yet. I don't know if we've communicated yet, but Mr. Trejo and I have been speaking about getting an item to brief the Court about your legal rights as far as office hours.
Yeah, and I appreciate that because it's so counterintuitive, you know, that we're, we're trying to work through this and unless, there's some exceptional reason, I can't imagine, but.
HR, I believe, and, and may, there may be a good reason, we don't know, but HR, I believe, had a few reports, four to five reports in their office. I had three specific reports of specific employees or people who went to those offices. And, and the three different locations were closed, different days, but different locations. The northeast, Isleta Annex, and then the main office, different days last week. And also the, there, that also impacts other offices that are located in those same offices.
Thank you, Betsy. And you're going to be looking into that to see the rationale?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Valeria, I'm sorry. Can we go back to the vacancies? So you said there were six total vacancies?
There's six vacancies. Two will be filled in January, and of the remaining four, we've completed and will have two employees promoted to those.
So we'll still have four vacancies, though? Because now you've got the two remaining plus the two that are being promoted?
So, I'm sorry. Of the six, so there are six vacancies, two will be filled externally in January. The remaining four, there's two that will be starting, they're being promoted at the end of November and the next pay period. And then there's three internal background checks in progress. So those three will fill in the two positions that are current, that are remaining. And then as employees move out, there's other positions that they're able to then fill behind. And then they did post for the entry-level positions, and we're in the testing process for that.
How many entry-level positions?
At the time, at this time, we don't have that number quite clear, just it's dependent upon those promotions that we have. So we'll have a better idea next week and I can provide that information to the Court.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I have one more question. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So the two that will be filled in January externally, because I know that the Hiring Waiting Committee granted the waiver request for Mr. Gonzalez. So why in January? Is that just because there's still more onboarding paperwork that has to be done?
They indicated that the timeframe worked for both, for the candidates. So they were not going to seek waivers for those positions.
Okay. So Mr. Gonzalez did not ask waivers?
No.
For those two positions? Okay. Great, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll take no action on item 9A. Item, item 9B, approve and authorize the County Judge to sign the first of three one-year options to renew the agreement between Integrity EAP Doing Business as Well Connect and El Paso County for psychological services provided for pre-employment and employment psychological examination services for El Paso County Human Resources Department. Funding is available in General Fund, HR Professional Services General, contract number 2025-0926.
Hi, good morning, County Judge Commissioners. Janet Cordova with the Human Resources Department at the Sheriff's Office. In accordance with policy and TICO license requirements, the Sheriff's Office is required to conduct both pre-employment tests and as well as fit-for-duty psychological examinations for candidates and employees. In 2023, through an agreement with Integrity In 2023, through an agreement with Integrity EAP DBA Well Connect, they agreed to perform these psychological examinations in compliance with the state, federal, and the agency requirements as specified using certified and/or licensed testing methods recognized and endorsed by the profession. The original agreement term is from December 1st of 2023 to November 30th of 2025, with the ability to exercise three one-year options to renew. This agreement is the first of the three one-year options to renew with Well Connect for those psychological examinations. We're asking for the court's favorable approval from the county judge to sign the first option to renew with Well Connect effective from December 1st of 2025 to November 30th of 2026.
Questions? We have a motion from Commissioner Olgin, a second from Judge Samaniego to approve. The voting is open.
I vote aye. My computer doesn't seem to be working.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we go into executive session, we do have a request to delete item number 10E from executive session and the corresponding regular session, item 11D. Item 10E is discuss litigation style to Susan Campa versus County of El Paso, cause number 2021 DCV 0247. County Attorney case number 001221LD, pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.071. Could we please have a motion to delete both items? Thank you. We have a motion from Judge Samaniego, a second from Commissioner Butler. Voting is open.
I vote aye.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion carries. Okay. At this time, Commissioners Court will recess into executive session to discuss items 10A through 10D and item 10F pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.071 and 551.072. Commissioners Court will reconvene to take official action. It is 11:20 a.m.
Oh my gosh. The ledges are wonderful. They grind amazing. Every, everything is smooth. It's a beautiful park. We are so grateful. Thank you so much.
One, two, and three. So today is a very, very happy day because we are here celebrating the renovations at Aguadulce Park, but also the naming of this specific skateboard park to the Mario Navarro Skateboard Park. Mario was a person who was very involved in our community and who spent a lot of his own personal time teaching children how to skateboard and how to skateboard safely. A big part of this project was receiving guidance and assistance from actual skateboarding professionals. We had a skate park here at Aguadulce before, but it's nothing like what you see today.
Go ahead.
The county received grant funds in 2021 to build three safe skate parks, and it was matched by county funds. The family of Lisbeth Avila contacted us to let us know that they would like naming the park in her honor as an option, and we were more than happy to do that. Lisbeth was an avid skater and unfortunately passed away due to a skating injury. And so this is a way to honor her legacy. Well, you know, it's a bittersweet. Of course, I would want to see her here, but I know that through her tragedy, we can offer now these safe skate parks. And this park was designed with safety in mind. And so we're really, really proud of the fact that we're promoting safety in all aspects, and we hope that the skating community will use our parks and know that it's a safe place for them to do so.
Oh, this is a great event that we have here out at Gallegos Park in the northwest area of the county, right next to Canuteo Middle School.
It's really nice. There's a lot of different areas that we can do different tricks on. I'm really hoping that there's more skate parks to come.
As you can see, a lot of the community members are out here. These skateboarders have been out here, actually, as soon as it was finished, they didn't wait for the ribbon cutting. They've been out here daily using this park.
Yeah, so I love the fact that, one thing that stuck out to me is this half pipe here. Not a lot of skate parks here have half pipes that we can utilize.
What this means is that this community now is on track to make sure that El Paso moves forward with quality of life projects.
Oh, it was excellent.
This is our second annual dog canine fiesta. We allow the dogs to come swim with their owners for the end of the season. It kicks off our highlighted program last year. We're going to have Dog Days of the Summer. Everybody is super excited. The dogs are actually inside the water for the majority of the time. And all of our participants are just super excited to be here and very happy.
The first one we have is Kubaka.
This is super important to bring the community together for special events like this. There's not a lot of places for owners to swim with their dogs, so that's where we came up with the so that's where we came up with the idea to enjoy the entire month of September. And it's just, it's an overall exciting event for our community to enjoy. So it's been really, really exciting for the end of the summer to have such a different event.
Lila, Minnie Mouse!
Hey, Lila, you're the winner! My dog Lila was dressed up as Minnie Mouse and I was Mickey Mouse. And we decided we were looking for something fun to do, so we heard about this and we came home a winner. The water makes it so much more fun, the costumes made it lively. You could judge a community by the way they treat their dogs. And clearly, El Paso cares a lot about their canines, and this canine fiesta was a great, a great thing to do, and I know they're gonna keep doing things. And clearly, everybody has had a great time today.
Thank you to everybody who has joined the county for the entire season. It has been a very great summer with a lot of people that just really came to enjoy the fall. So we want to thank everybody who joined us this summer, and we can't wait to start again next season.
Hola, El Paso. I'm Communications Manager Laura Gallegos, and this is El Paso County Connects. From aerospace innovation to cultural celebrations, we've got you covered. Now let's get started. El Paso County helped launch our region's future with the Space Tech El Paso Step 2025 Conference, a major collaboration focused on aerospace innovation. Partnering with UTEP, the City of El Paso, and the Texas Space Coalition, the county showcased how education, workforce, and industry are joining forces to make El Paso a hub for aerospace growth. El Paso County proudly celebrated its third annual county employee veterans luncheon at the El Paso County Coliseum on October 9th and 10th. This year's two-day event allowed more participants from sheriff's office veterans and honored county employees who have served our nation. The luncheon is part of the county's mission to be the Veterans' Capital of the USA, a commitment to making El Paso County the premier destination for veterans and military families. El Paso County broke ground on Milagro Park, a new recreational development in Horizon View Estates that will bring much-needed outdoor spaces to local families. The $3 million project funded by the Texas Parks and Wildlife and El Paso County includes trails, playgrounds, picnic shelters, and sports fields, all designed to encourage wellness and connection. Built based on community input from the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, Milagro Park will open in early 2027, adding another beautiful park to our growing network of green spaces. In partnership with the Consulate General of Mexico in El Paso, the county hosted a beautiful Dia de los Muertos celebration at the Enrique Moreno County Courthouse. The evening featured the unveiling of the Altar de Muertos dedicated to loved ones who came before us and honored the winners of the Calaverita Literaria contest. Families enjoyed pan de muerto and hot chocolate while celebrating one of Mexico's most cherished traditions, a vibrant symbol of remembrance and unity. Halloween fun filled the Enrique Moreno County Courthouse, where families enjoyed a safe and festive trick-or-treat at the courthouse event. Kids collected treats from participating offices while county employees joined in with costume and decoration contests. The event brought smiles, laughter, and plenty of candy, a fun and safe way to celebrate Halloween in the heart of our county. Well, that does it for this El Paso County Connects. Make sure to follow us on social media. Until next time, stay informed and stay connected.
Oh my gosh, the ledges are wonderful, they grind amazing. Everything is smooth, it's a beautiful park. We are so grateful, thank you so much.
One, two, and three.
So today is a very, very happy day because we are here celebrating the renovations at Aguadulce Park, but also the naming of this specific skateboard park to the Mario Navarro Skateboard Park. Mario was a person who was very involved in our community and who spent a lot of his own personal time teaching children how to skateboard and how to skateboard safely. A big part of this project was receiving guidance and assistance from actual skateboarding professionals. We had a skate park here at Aguadulce before, but it's nothing like what you see today. The county received grant funds in 2021 to build three safe skate parks, and it was matched by county funds. The family of Lizbeth Avila contacted us to let us know that they would like naming the park in her honor as an option, and we were more than happy to do that. Lizbeth was an avid skater and unfortunately passed away due to a skating injury, and so this is a way to honor her legacy.
Well, you know, it's a bittersweet. Of course, I would want to see her here, but I know that through her tragedy, we can offer now these safe skate parks.
And this park was designed with safety in mind. And so we're really, really proud of the fact that we're promoting safety in all aspects, and we hope that the skating community will use our parks and know that it's a safe place for them to do so.
Oh, this is a great event that we have here out at Gallegos Park in the northwest area of the county, right next to Canuteo Middle School.
It's really nice, there's a lot of different areas that we can do different tricks on. I'm really hoping that there's more skate parks to come.
As you can see, a lot of the community members are out here. These skateboarders have been out here, actually as soon as it was finished, they didn't wait for the ribbon cutting. They've been out here daily using this park.
Yeah, so I love the fact that, one thing that stuck out to me is this half-pipe here. Not a lot of skate parks here have half-pipes that we can utilize.
What this means is that this community now is on track to make sure that El Paso moves forward with quality of life projects.
Oh, it was excellent.
This is our second annual dog canine fiesta. We allow the dogs to come swim with their owners for the end of the season. It kicks off our highlighted program last year. We're gonna have Dog Days of the Summer. Everybody's super excited, the dogs are actually inside the water for the majority of the time, and all of our participants are just super excited to be here and very happy.
The first one we have is Cubaca.
This is super important to bring the community together for special events like this. There's not a lot of places for owners to swim with their dogs, so that's where we came up with the idea to enjoy the entire month of September. And it's just, it's an overall exciting event for our community to enjoy. So it's been really, really exciting for the end of the summer to have such a different event.
My dog Lila was dressed up as Minnie Mouse and I was Mickey Mouse. And we decided we were looking for something fun to do, so we heard about this and we came home a winner. and we came home a winner. The water makes it so much more fun, the costumes made it lively. You could judge a community by the way they treat their dogs, and clearly El Paso cares a lot, they're a lot about their canines, and this canine fiesta was a great, a great thing to do, and I know they're gonna keep doing things. And clearly, everybody has had a great time today.
Thank you to everybody who has joined the county for the entire season. It has been a very great summer with a lot of people that just really came to enjoy the fall, so we want to thank everybody who joined us this summer, and we can't wait to start again next season.
Hola, El Paso. I'm Communications Manager Laura Gallegos, and this is El Paso County Connects. From aerospace innovation to cultural celebrations, we've got you covered. Now let's get started. El Paso County helped launch our region's future with the Space Tech El Paso Step 2025 Conference, a major collaboration focused on aerospace innovation. Partnering with UTEP, the City of El Paso, and the Texas Space Coalition, the county showcased how education, workforce, and industry are joining forces to make El Paso a hub for aerospace growth. El Paso County proudly celebrated its third annual county employee veterans luncheon at the El Paso County Coliseum on October 9th and 10th. This year's two-day event allowed more participants from sheriff's office veterans and honored county employees who have served our nation. The luncheon is part of the county's mission to be the veterans' capital of the USA, a commitment to making El Paso County the premier destination for veterans and military families. El Paso County broke ground on Milagro Park, a new recreational development in Horizon View Estates that will bring much-needed outdoor spaces to local families. The $3 million project funded by the Texas Parks and Wildlife and El Paso County includes trails, playgrounds, picnic shelters, and sports fields, all designed to encourage wellness and connection. Built based on community input from the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, Milagro Park will open in early 2027, adding another beautiful park to our growing network of green spaces. In partnership with the Consulate General of Mexico in El Paso, the county hosted a beautiful Dia de los Muertos celebration at the Enrique Moreno County Courthouse. The evening featured the unveiling of the Altar de Muertos dedicated to loved ones who came before us, and honored the winners of the Calaverita Literaria contest. Families enjoyed Pan de Muerto and hot chocolate while celebrating one of Mexico's most cherished traditions, a vibrant symbol of remembrance and unity. Halloween fun filled the Enrique Moreno County Courthouse, where families enjoyed a safe and festive trick-or-treat at the courthouse event. Kids collected treats from participating offices, while county employees joined in with costume and decoration contests. The event brought smiles, laughter, and plenty of candy, a fun and safe way to celebrate Halloween in the heart of our county. Well, that does it for this El Paso County Connects. Make sure to follow us on social media. Until next time, stay informed and stay connected.
Oh my gosh, the ledges are wonderful, they grind amazing, every, everything is smooth, it's beautiful park. We are so grateful, thank you so much.
One, two, and three.
So today is a very, very happy day because we are here celebrating the renovations at Aguadulce Park, but also the naming of this specific skateboard park to the Mario Navarro Skateboard Park. Mario was a person who was very involved in our community and who spent a lot of his own personal time teaching children how to skateboard and how to skateboard safely. A big part of this project was receiving guidance and assistance from actual skateboarding professionals. We had a skate park here at Aguadulce before, but it's nothing like what you see today. The county received grant funds in 2021 to build three safe skate parks, and it was matched by county funds. The family of Lizbeth Avila contacted us to let us know that they would like naming the park in her honor as an option, and we were more than happy to do that. Lizbeth was an avid skater and unfortunately passed away due to a skating injury, and so this is a way to honor her legacy.
Well, you know, it's a bittersweet. Of course, I would want to see her here, but I know that through her tragedy, we can offer now these safe skate parks.
And this park was designed with safety in mind, and so we're really, really proud of the fact that we're promoting safety in all aspects, and we hope that the skating community will use our parks and know that it's a safe place for them to do so.
Oh, this is a great event that we have here out at Gallegos Park in the northwest area of the county, right next to Canuteo Middle School.
It's, it's really nice, there's a lot of different areas that we can do different tricks on. I'm really hoping that there's more skate parks to come.
As you can see, a lot of the community members are out here. These skateboarders have been out here, actually as soon as it was finished, they didn't wait for the ribbon cutting. They've been out here daily using this park.
Yeah, so I love the fact that, one thing that stuck out to me is this half pipe here. Not a lot of skate parks here have half pipes that we can utilize.
What this means is that this community now is on track to make sure that El Paso moves forward with quality of life projects.
Oh, it was excellent.
This is our second annual dog canine fiesta. We allow the dogs to come swim with their owners for the end of the season. It kicks off our highlighted program last year. We're gonna have Dog Days of the Summer. Everybody's super excited, the dogs are actually inside the water for the majority of the time, and all of our participants are just super excited to be here and very happy.
The first one we have is Cubaca.
This is super important to bring the community together for special events like this. There's not a lot of places for owners to swim with their dogs, so that's where we came up with the idea to enjoy the entire month of September. And it's just, it's an overall exciting event for our community to enjoy, so it's been really, really exciting for the end of the summer to have such a different event.
My dog Lila was dressed up as Minnie Mouse and I was Mickey Mouse. And, and we decided we were looking for something fun to do, so we heard about this, and we came home a winner. The water makes it so much more fun, the costumes made it lively. You could judge a community by the way they treat their dogs, and clearly El Paso cares a lot, they're a lot about their canines, and this canine fiesta was a great, a great thing to do, and I know they're gonna keep doing things. And clearly, everybody has had a great time today.
Thank you to everybody who has joined the county for the entire season. Thank you to everybody who has joined the county for the entire season. It has been a very great summer with a lot of people that just really came to enjoy the call, so we want to thank everybody who joined us this summer, and we can't wait to start again next season.
Hola, El Paso. I'm Communications Manager Laura Gallegos, and this is El Paso County Connects. From aerospace innovation to cultural celebrations, we've got you covered. Now let's get started. El Paso County helped launch our region's future with the Space Tech El Paso Step 2025 Conference, a major collaboration focused on aerospace innovation. Partnering with UTEP, the City of El Paso, and the Texas Space Coalition, the county showcased how education, workforce, and industry are joining forces to make El Paso a hub for aerospace growth. El Paso County proudly celebrated its third annual county employee veterans luncheon at the El Paso County Coliseum on October 9th and 10th. This year's two-day event allowed more participants from sheriff's office veterans and honored county employees who have served our nation. The luncheon is part of the county's mission to be the veterans' capital of the USA, a commitment to making El Paso County the premier destination for veterans and military families. El Paso County broke ground on Milagro Park, a new recreational development in Horizon View Estates that will bring much-needed outdoor spaces to local families. The $3 million project funded by the Texas Parks and Wildlife and El Paso County includes trails, playgrounds, picnic shelters, and sports fields, all designed to encourage wellness and connection. Built based on community input from the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, Milagro Park will open in early 2027, adding another beautiful park to our growing network of green spaces. In partnership with the Consulate General of Mexico in El Paso, the county hosted a beautiful Dia de los Muertos celebration at the Enrique Moreno County Courthouse. The evening featured the unveiling of the altar de muertos dedicated to loved ones who came before us and honored the winners of the Calaverita Literaria contest. Families enjoyed pan de muerto and hot chocolate while celebrating one of Mexico's most cherished traditions, a vibrant symbol of remembrance and unity. Halloween fun filled the Enrique Moreno County Courthouse, where families enjoyed a safe and festive trick-or-treat at the courthouse event. Kids collected treats from participating offices while county employees joined in with costume and decoration contests. The event brought smiles, laughter, and plenty of candy, a fun and safe way to celebrate Halloween in the heart of our county. Well, that does it for this El Paso County Connects. Make sure to follow us on social media. Until next time, stay informed and stay connected. Until next time, stay informed and stay connected.
Oh my gosh, the ledges are wonderful. They grind amazing. Everything is smooth. It's a beautiful park. We are so grateful. Thank you so much.
One, two, and three.
So today is a very, very happy day because we are here celebrating the renovations at Aguaduliza Park, but also the naming of this specific skateboard park to the Mario Navarro Skateboard Park. Mario was a person who was very involved in our community and who spent a lot of his own personal time teaching children how to skateboard and how to skateboard safely. A big part of this project was receiving guidance and assistance from actual skateboarding professionals. We had a skate park here at Aguaduliza before, but it's nothing like what you see today.
Go ahead.
The county received grant funds in 2021 to build three safe skate parks. And it was matched by county funds. The family of Lisbeth Avila contacted us to let us know that they would like naming the park in her honor as an option. And we were more than happy to do that. Lisbeth was an avid skater and unfortunately passed away due to a skating injury. And so this is a way to honor her legacy. Well, you know, it's a bittersweet. Of course, I would want to see her here. But I know that through her tragedy, we can offer now these safe skate parks. And this park was designed with safety in mind. And so we're really, really proud of the fact that we're promoting safety in all aspects. And we hope that the skating community will use our parks and know that it's a safe place for them to do so.
Oh, this is a great event that we have here out at Gallegos Park in the northwest area of the county, right next to Canuteo Middle School.
It's really nice. There's a lot of different areas that we can do different tricks on. I'm really hoping that there's more skate parks to come.
As you can see, a lot of the community members are out here. These skateboarders have been out here, actually, as soon as it was finished, they didn't wait for the ribbon cutting. They've been out here daily using this park.
Yeah, so I love the fact that one thing that stuck out to me is this half-pipe here. Not a lot of skate parks here have half-pipes that we can utilize.
What this means is that this community now is on track to make sure that El Paso moves forward with quality-of-life projects.
Oh, it was excellent.
This is our second annual Dog Canine Fiesta. We allow the dogs to come swim with their owners for the end of the season. It kicks off our pilot program last year. We're going to have Dog Days of the Summer. Everybody's super excited. The dogs are actually inside the water for the majority of the time. And all of our participants are just super excited to be here and very happy. The first one we have is Kubaka. The Mariachi. This is super important to bring the community together for special events like this. There's not a lot of places for owners to swim with their dogs. So that's where we came up with the idea to enjoy the entire month of September. And it's just, it's an overall exciting event for our community to enjoy. So it's been really, really exciting for the end of the summer to have such a different event. Lila Minnie Mouse.
Hey, Lila, you're the winner. My dog, Lila, was dressed up as Minnie Mouse and I was Mickey Mouse. And we decided we were looking for something fun to do. So we heard about this and we came home a winner. The water makes it so much more fun. The costumes made it lively. You could judge a community by the way they treat their dogs. And clearly, El Paso cares a lot about their canines. And this Canine Fiesta was a great, uh, great thing to do. And I know they're going to keep doing things. And clearly, everybody has had a great time today.
Thank you to everybody who has joined the county for the entire season. It has been a very great summer with a lot of people that just really came to enjoy the call. So we want to thank everybody who joined us this summer. And we can't wait to start again next season.
Go ahead. Commissioner's Court has reconvened into regular open session. It is 12:39 PM. Item number 11A. Discuss and take appropriate action pertaining to the Commissioner's Court's participation in the El Paso Metropolitan Planning Organization meetings and the MPO's proposed amendments to its bylaws.
Good afternoon. Anna Schumacher is the county attorney. We are not seeking any action on this item. Thank you all.
No action for item 11A. Item 11B. Discuss and take appropriate action regarding potential intervention by El Paso County in the application of El Paso Electric Company for authority to change rates. SOAH docket number 4732511219. PUC docket number 57568. County Attorney's File Number 001725AA.
Good afternoon. Anna Schumacher is the county attorney. We are also not seeking action on this item. Thank you all.
No action for item 11B. Item 11C. Discuss and take appropriate action in pending matters related to Marathon Petroleum's El Paso refinery air permit request for permit number 18897. County Attorney's Case Number 000424AA.
Again, Anna Schumacher is the county attorney. We're not requesting any action on this item. Thank you all.
And no action for item 11C. And item number 11E. We do have a correction to read in for the county attorney's office. The item should read "discuss and take action to acquire real property" within CD Stewart Survey number 2... Excuse me, CD Stewart Survey number 324 and authorize the county judge to execute any and all documents relevant to the acquisition, including contracts 2025-0571 and 2025-0555. Funding is available in an amount not to exceed $190,000 in general fund, road and bridge, flood control, stormwater improvements.
Anna Schumacher is the county attorney. So to re-say that motion essentially would be to approve the acquisition of real property within CD Stewart Survey number 324 and authorize the county judge to execute any and all documents relevant to the acquisition, including contracts 2025-0571 and 2025-0555. Funding is available in an amount not to exceed $190,000 in GF-RBF flood, CNT-strmwtr, stormwater improve EMPROV.
We have a motion from Judge Samaniego, a second from Commissioner Olgin. The voting is open. Motion carries. This completes all the items on the agenda, Judge.
Well, thank you. Wishing all of you a great week. Thank you. Back there, productions. Thank you. Looking forward to get Alexis back this week.
And don't forget to join us in about 45 minutes for birthday cake in your lobby for Michelle and Claudia for this month.
Michelle and?
Claudia in my office.
Thank you.
This concludes today's meeting at 12:43 PM.